Very good. Welcome, everybody. It's good to see all your smiling faces. Glad that you're with us tonight. Those of you watching at home on TV six certainly welcome tonight. And those of you that are watching on our Facebook feed, welcome to. We're glad you're with us. This is your Lewisville Town Council's January meeting and we're very pleased that you're tuning in to see the workings of your town council. We'll do our roll call and I'll call the roll and the individual. Actually, let me just, you know, we used to do it that everybody got to introduce themselves when we were in person, which I thought was a much more personal way for your council to introduce themselves to you. But I guess I just have to go across and folks can raise their hands and and indicate themselves to you first. Councilwoman Jane Welch.
Good evening.
Councilwoman Melissa Hunt.
Happy Thursday.
Councilwoman Jean Marie Foster.
Good evening.
And Mayor Pro Tem. Now, still, one of these is he'll figure out what the ten is all about, but I understand what the pro is all about, but the ten I'm having trouble with. Councilmember Dr. Ken Sadler. And Councilmember Fred Franklin.
Here, give blood if you can.
We must have been six weeks. Have we been six weeks?
Excuse me, November. It's every other month.
Good. Thank you, Fred, for that reminder. Well, if you'll be so kind to start our meeting this evening with our invitation, please.
I'd be honored to. Let's pray. God, our Father, we come to you with Thanksgiving for the beginning of a new year and for the opportunities that a new year presents to us. Even in the midst of sickness and turmoil, we know that you are there and we ask you to continue always to be with us. And we give you thanks for the town that you've blessed us with and blessed us with being able to live in. We thank you for all that it provides to us. We thank you for its elected body, for its staff, and for all of those who make it and its volunteers and all those who make it such a wonderful place to live. We ask your blessings now upon this meeting. Give us courage. Give us wisdom to do the things that we know you want us to do and that are in the best interest of the town. Be with us in the coming days and weeks and we give this this prayer in your holy name.
Thank you, Bo. You know, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you who have been to our council meetings in person, it is a it is a privilege to be able to pledge allegiance to our flag. We've not been doing that because we've been in virtual meetings, but I think we figured out a way to do it tonight. Hank, were you able to or Stacy, were you able to find a
Got it.
There we go. Outstanding. That's such a beautiful sight. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please join us as I lead us in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. With liberty and justice. Thank you, everybody. Well, we got to see a few waste shots of folks as they stood up. That was kind of fun. I like that. We have an agenda this evening, folks. Ms. Walker, has there been any changes to the agenda since our since we sent it out?
No. I think council has the packet that was sent late today. They were advised the other day that we were waiting on additional information. We finally received that and I've added it to their packet.
Excellent. Very good. If there are no changes or additions, council members will entertain a motion to approve the agenda tonight.
Add an addition, please, Mayor Horn.
Yes, ma'am.
Wanted to add current information on the COVID-19 vaccinations for sixty-five and over.
Okay, and it's appropriate that you should say that because I was just in a meeting this afternoon with our county health director. Let's add that maybe under. How about and unless Ms. Welch, you have some more timely information.
A little bit of more timely because also involving Guilford County.
Gotcha. So let's put that under our council comments at the end and we can you can I can chime in to what what you have that I that I that I haven't learned and we'll do it at that point if that's acceptable.
Sounds perfect.
Very good. Any other changes or revisions? With that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. As Hunt makes the motion.
I'll second.
Franklin makes the second. Any further discussion? Very good. Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Mr. Franklin. Mayor's eye, that's our agenda for this evening. Thank you very much. Hank, would you please walk us through our consent agenda?
Sure. This evening's consent agenda consists of five items. First is Resolution two zero two one zero zero three, acceptance and approval of monthly financials for the five months ending November thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Next is the approval of council town council briefing minutes from December third, two thousand twenty. Approval of closed session minutes from December third, two thousand twenty. Approval of town council meeting minutes from December tenth, two thousand twenty. And lastly, approval of closed session minutes, December tenth, two thousand twenty.
Very good. Ms. Orell, I think you have a little new information for us on our financials.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. If you recall during our budget workshop, we were talking about sales tax revenues and how up in the air they were and we weren't quite sure what they would come in at. And we budgeted very conservatively and we really expected sales tax revenues to come in pretty low. But actually, they've come in a lot higher than expected. We've collected for the first four months of the fiscal year and we're actually up two percent over the same period last year. So that's some good news for the town. And of course, our ABC ABC store revenue is also up compared to last year and actually coming in over budget as well. So.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you, your patronage or ABC. We hope you will drink and drive responsibly, but it certainly helps the town. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that ordinarily come before the council. As you heard, there are financials and there also are minutes of meetings. We take these as a group unless an individual council member would like to pull one of them off and discuss them alone without them being in this group. Council members, what's your pleasure? I guess it would be an invitation to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Very good. Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? Very good. Ms. Welch.
Hi.
Ms. Foster.
Hi.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Franklin.
Hi.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Mayor's eye. Thank you very much. Did I calling you twice, Ms. Hunt, or just that once?
Just once, just out of a different order. Yeah.
I don't know what's going on with my screen, but you guys are moving around on me. So you're just I'm having trouble keeping up with you, but I think we'll be okay. Sergeant Stringer. It looks as if you have joined our meeting tonight.
Absolutely. Happy to be here.
Very good. How about how about sharing with us our public safety report, please?
Okay. So our total calls for service were was six hundred and fifty-eight for the month of December with three hundred and sixty-one security checks. Ninety traffic citations or excuse me, thirty-six traffic citations.
Excuse me, PJ, which which one should I be sharing the PowerPoint? I mean, the
No, that that would be, yeah, the power or the spreadsheet.
Okay, let me stop sharing this. I share the different one for you. Now I can find it.
Well, thanks, looking PJ. We are glad that you recovered from COVID-19, a unfortunately a hazard of your profession.
Absolutely. It's a it was a learning experience. I tell you.
I bet it was.
There we go, PJ.
All right. So six hundred and fifty-eight total calls for service for the month of December. Security checks, three hundred and sixty-one. See, we had thirty-six traffic violations and our alarms were up a little bit, twenty-three. And our response time, four point or four point nine minutes. We're still making contact with businesses trying to hand out masks as we as we get time and trying to encourage the business to support, you know, having everybody wear a mask and dropping off some that were provided by the town. So not been really met with any resistance. So we're still trying to make ways with that and do what we can to to keep everybody safe and healthy.
Very good. Any questions for PJ?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, please. Go ahead.
Ms. Welch, go ahead.
Was Jean Marie, was she first?
I think her hand went up, but your voice rang out.
Your call, Jane.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Sergeant Stringer. Absolutely. So pleased that you are back and have recovered and hopefully fully recovered by now.
Yeah, it seems to be getting better.
As a it's a rough hole and and thank you in the sheriff's department, you know, for for keeping our citizens safe. And you didn't mention that you, you know, put out pamphlets and wanted to ask you a little about specifics. How often would you say you were going to businesses, especially those who are not requiring masks for their staff or the public that comes in?
We're trying to make it as a educational type thing. The sheriffs made it clear that we want to stay with the educational type approach rather than an enforcement approach. So you know, it's some days we make contact with a couple of businesses depending on call volume. So it's just there's really not a way to say how often that we're going, but we're just we're trying to do that as time allows.
So you would say you're probably going a couple of times a week to a business at least.
Yeah, if we drop off them, if we drop off a bundle of masks and some pamphlets, we'll go back in sometime at the next week and try to refresh those.
Okay, that's, thank you. It's real encouraging. I know the governor keeps asking the local officials to to help and using our sheriff's department. So I just wondered what above and beyond normal that the sheriff's department was actually doing to to I don't think you can enforce them with citations, can you?
We can. However, the the court system, you got to remember that the courthouse is completely shut down because the the court docket is just overloaded with citation, not being able to filter through these traffic cases. So we don't want to do that because all we're going to do is bog that court system down even more. And so that's why we're taking the educational approach. And what I've seen is I have seen the the wearing of masks kind of pick up. And I think as people, as it starts to affect people's family more, they start to see the severity of it. And so I think they're taking initiative and and it's getting the point of curls.
Now, that's encouraging. Thank you, Sergeant Stringer.
Yes, ma'am. Have a good night.
Ms. Foster.
Well, let me follow up on one something that Jane said. So Sergeant Stringer, thank you again. Good to see you. Could between you and the mayor, perhaps just a quick explanation for the public that might be watching about the relationship between the town and the sheriff's department and what you all do in terms of the enforcement component. There are some things that that we can do and some things that we can't do because we don't have ordinance in place and because of well, I'll pause there. I think you and the mayor have a better sense of this. Again, I just want to make sure that community understands the relationship.
Mayor, is that something that you want to elaborate on or?
I'll I'll take a whack and if I if I fall short, you can jump in. The town contracts with the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office for our deputy community policing fourth force. And right now we have Sergeant Stringer and we have five deputies. Is that right, PJ?
That's correct. You have including me, there's six.
Sergeant Stringer and and five deputies. We obviously contract with them and they they enforce the laws of the state and the laws of Forsyth County. And as a general rule, we don't have a lot of civil kinds of ordinances that are related to law and order in in terms of the town. So their primary responsibility is to enforce those things, which are the state and the county. The the deputies and sergeant are under the direction of the sheriff of Forsyth County. However, they were very closely with the town. They were very closely with Hank and the mayor and and our residents to to do what they can to support our community. One of the unusual things about community policing is that they are just not they're not out just riding around patrol cars enforcing the laws, which certainly they do that. But they are much more engaged with the community. Their visibility is higher. They get to know the neighborhoods and they get to meet the residents. So their relationships that they form are a little more than just the the officers, the deputies who are on patrol. PJ, what I leave out?
Oh, that that was spot on. It's like your salesman.
I had a question of clarity, please, Mayor Horn.
Yes, ma'am.
So in other words, if we passed and we would not then pass an ordinance in our town and then consequently the sheriffs would implement that.
Yeah, we have no, the town itself has no enforcement ability. But the the we I'm trying to think PJ, PJ, what's a good example? Our noise ordinance is a county ordinance that we enforce. I'm trying to think if we're our traffic ordinances or county ordinance and state ordinances. Bo, do you have a suggestion?
We just have a parking. My parking is probably the closest thing that we have, but otherwise, and and there's a reason for that. The the law does not allow us to duplicate. So for example, there's no speed limit enforcement of town ordinance. That's a state statute. So those things preempt our right to do that. So we we follow behind those on a lot of those sorts of of laws.
Any more questions for PJ?
Yes, I thank you, Bo, the trifecta, PJ, Bo, and the mayor. Thank you very much. That's that's really helpful to make this issue come to to life. So thanks very much. But yeah, PJ, when I'm sorry, Sergeant Stringer, when Hank pulled up the document, it seemed to jump out at me. Hank, help me out. It looked like November was in real aberrancy for the second item, which was calls for service. Is that?
Security checks.
Any explanation, any ideas on why that was so high, looking across the whole totality of the year?
Well, seeing that that is actually high, that's a good thing. Because when when a deputy actually goes out into a neighborhood, let's just say that you call or you send me an email and you say I'm going to be out of town for a week on vacation. So we'll go by and check your house and make sure everything's good. So that those are self-initiated activities where where a deputy may be in a neighborhood monitoring complaints for speed or or looking for a suspicious person or anything like that. So that's self-initiated. So that those high numbers show that the deputies are actually out there, not only answering the calls for service, but they're actually taking a self-initiated activity to to protect everybody.
Thank you. You might have explained that before. Did miss that. Thank you very much. Got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Anything else for Sergeant Springer tonight? Thanks, PJ. Appreciate all you do.
Yes, sir. Y'all y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Ms. Orell, you have a guest. I'm sorry, Mr. Franklin. Were you waving goodbye or have a question? Okay, Ms. Orell, you have a guest you'd like to introduce tonight.
Yes, the local government commission has approved our audit and tonight we had Monty Pendry from Gibson and Company to present the results of those of that audit.
Welcome, Monty. He went to the refrigerator.
Hank, have we got him?
Promoted him to panelist.
There we go.
Can you see me now?
Nope.
We can hear you.
Oh, you can hear me?
Is your video on?
There he comes.
Can you see me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, yeah, I lost everybody there for a second. It was doing something, but anyway. Good evening. I am Monty Pendry and am with Gibson and Company and we have performed the audit for the current year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. This evening, I just want to give you a very brief overview of the results of our audit for the current year. We have completed the audit and it has, like Pam said, it has been sent to the local government commission and they have approved it. And we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and also according to government auditing standards. And in our opinion, based on our audit, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position of the town of Lewisville and the changes in that position of the town for the year of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. This is what we call a unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, which is the best opinion we can issue. We found all accounts to be properly properly reconciled and we found the books and accounting records to be in good order. We did not have to make any journal entries this year. And during the audit, we found no matters of non-compliance or no any internal control problems. In addition, there were no budget violations in the general fund or in any of the other governmental funds. The town ended the year very well financially despite the onset of the global pandemic in the latter part of the year. The general fund ended with the year with an increase in the fund balance of five hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred ninety-five dollars. This in this increase is due to several factors. The town received some unexpected federal funding from the coronavirus relief fund in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine forty-three. The federal government allowed the town to use this money to offset the cost of the community policing program with Forsyth County. Overall, revenues came in well over what the town had budgeted, especially in the areas of your property taxes, your sales tax revenue and the profit distribution from the ABC board. Notably, revenue from the ABC board came in at approximately one hundred and ninety-five thousand, which is a twelve percent increase over the the past fiscal year. And in addition, the general fund expenditures came in well under budget and were also slightly lower than total expenditures as compared to the prior year. So at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, the town, the total general fund balance was seven million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars. And of that, approximately six million, seven hundred fifty-three thousand was available for appropriation. The available fund balance as a percentage of your general fund expenditures was a hundred and fifty-eight percent. The local government commission recommends that units not allow that percentage to drop below eight percent. And so this is a healthy fund balance that you have. It is also well above the sixty-five percent required required percentage per the town's financial management policy. Now for just a few comments about the town's other governmental funds, the town does have the four capital reserve funds. Which are the Stormwater Capital Reserve, the Great Wagon Road Right of Way Construction Capital Reserve, the Sidewalk Bike Pass and Greenwood Greenways Capital Reserve and the Municipal Buildings and Land Capital Reserve. The town transferred monies into these funds from the general fund in the amount of four hundred and five thousand this year. And capital reserves totaled two million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars at June thirtieth. The town also had six capital project funds during the year. The most active being the Gateway Project and the New Community Center Capital Project. All of these are well-funded and working well within their established budgets. The last remaining fund is the Willa Run Municipal Service District Special Revenue Fund. It ended the year with a fund balance of one hundred sixty-five thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars, which is down eleven thousand, four thirty-three for the year. The decrease the decrease was due to a large tree removal project that you had and an increase in the repairs compared to the prior year. I know that was sort of fast and very brief, but all in all, the the town ended the year in a strong financial position, has a healthy general fund balance. And y'all have set aside general reserve generous reserves for the future capital improvements. Are there any questions that I can try to answer for concerning the audit or the financial statements?
Dr. Sadler, yes, sir.
Yeah, I've got the letter that was sent to the mayor and to council from from Gibson and Company. But it doesn't have the kind of detail I'm hearing. I haven't seen that audit report yet. I've got the CAFER, but I don't and I don't know if it's in our boxes or not. That full report you just gave, where can I get a copy of this? Or do we already have one in our boxes?
Really, Dr. Sadler, he pulled all of those numbers out of the CAFER. The audit opinion is in your CAFER on page one.
Doc Sadler, while you're while you're going to that, Mr. Franklin, Ms. Welch, and of course you can know that I always do this. Hank, would you allow me to screen share here for a moment?
I think you can there.
Those numbers, there were a lot of numbers there, but I'd just like to identify for our residents the numbers that I think are unbelievably impressive for a community of our size. We have a general fund of a little over seven million, two hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. And that's the money that we actually have in our fund balance. But of that available for us to use, that's unencumbered. When I say unencumbered, it's not tied up in a designated account like Stormwater or communities or capital projects or or Great Wagon Road. It's not encumbered in any of those which are dedicated funding. We have six million, seven hundred thousand dollars that are available unencumbered funds that we can use for various projects as we need this. Why it's important, folks, is that particularly on road projects, when a opportunity comes up for us to submit a road road project, one of the things that the state and the federal government look at is are you able to make your match? And most of these projects require eighty percent from an outside source and twenty percent from the town. Because we have such a such a healthy balance, we are in an excellent position to take advantage of federal and state funds when they come up for those kinds of projects that improve our infrastructure. The I think the the number that people talk about, that is our annual budget, a little over four and a half million dollars. And for those of you who haven't really, I get the question all the time, what do you guys spend your money on? Well, let me talk about where where it quickly comes in. Property taxes only account for fifty-one percent of our revenue stream. Other state and local revenues account for the remainder of it. Twenty-four percent of our budget goes for general government. That's the things that we do every day to keep the government open and keep us working. Public Works, which is your road repairs and pothole repairs and all the things that the Public Works folks do to to provide services for the town, including garbage or solid waste and recycling. That's forty percent of our budget. Planning, which we all talk about because we want Lewisville to stay the lovely, charming town that it is. We have a very aggressive and a very, very comprehensive planning department. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Franklin will be quick to point out that one of the reasons we have a budget in Parks and Recreation is because we allocate Fred, what's our number, seven and a half?
It's six dollars and fifty cents.
Six dollars and fifty cents.
I'm sure movie tickets have gone up again, but anyhow, that's it. It was based upon what it costs to buy a movie ticket for everybody when we first established this budget. And I think at that time it was five fifty many, many years ago.
And we use that designated money in our parks and recreation budget to do the kinds of things to to provide family entertainment and and make our town the kind of place where we can build community. Public Safety, Sergeant Stringer just spoke to that. That is fifteen percent of our budget. Our debt service is incredibly low at five percent. And that's primarily due to our outstanding loan that we're getting ready to. We have paid it off. That would soon be paid off our town hall.
We paid off the town hall in this current fiscal year. So that five percent was actually the debt service we paid in the last fiscal year.
Very good. So our debt service now is probably close to zero, isn't it?
For this year, it is. It will be zero.
Very good. And then reserve transfers and that that's just money we transfer into our our reserves reserve accounts. But I wanted to take a second and just put those numbers up so that folks could actually see the number and hear us talk about them to know that that over the years your town council and your town staff have have been very judicious in how we have used your money and how we've invested your tax dollars, our tax dollars. I will gladly point out to anybody who talks about our tax rate, we have not done anything with our taxes since two thousand and four. And I will tell you in two thousand and four, we reduced our taxes. Dr. Sadler, you were a member of that that council. Mr. Franklin, you were a member of that council. Ms. Welch, I think that was after you. I'm not sure you run that particular council. So we have not had a an increase. Actually, I had anything going on with our taxes since our decrease in two thousand and three.
Mike, I actually I actually turned it off in two thousand and three in this. It was lower than two thousand and four. Yeah, I was not on that count because I had turned off.
So so you know, I think when when we hear, and I apologize, folks, for a second, because this is this is one of the things that's near and dear to me. When I hear folks talk about, oh, we pay too much taxes. Well, think about it, we've had almost seventeen years without a single increase in property taxes. Now we're fortunate because we've had growth in the town that has helped us increase our tax base, so we haven't had to do that. But we've also been very judicious in how we've spent money. People say to me oftentimes, well, why can't we have a tax rate like Clemens, which is nine and a half cents? And I'll say, well, we can do that if you'd like to have a strip down through Louisville like Clement had, Clemens has. Because that's where a huge amount of their tax revenue comes from in commercial. Um, I, I hope in just these few minutes, I've been able to share with you a little insight about our budget. But more than that, the, the, the high priority that spending and keeping your money is to this council and previous councils.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the Clemens tax rate is fixed in their charter.
It is, Ken.
Yeah.
Has a ceiling.
Yeah, they have a ceiling. And so then the other thing is in, in oh four, when there was a reduction in rate. Uh, my, my recollection is that was a hold harmless. Um, we, we did that to, because there was an increase based on revaluation.
Exactly.
Property, we, we reduced the rate in order to hold people harmless. So they didn't get an increase. And what they were paying, the, the, the rate was reduced, the amount that they were paying on an annual basis essentially.
Yeah, Mr. Sadler, the term for that is revenue neutral.
Right, right.
Yeah. And the flip side of that is when property values, of course, all that is driven, our property tax income is, is driven by property values or evaluation. The flip side of that is when property values went down. We also um, or when property values went up, we, we, we adjusted. When property values go down. We didn't adjust up to make up for lost revenue. We absorbed that loss revenue in our regular operating budget. So, um, finance one oh one, Ms. Orrell, I hope you approve. Yeah, council members, anybody else would like to make a comment?
No, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Doc Sadler.
No, just looking at the, the CAFRA and I, and I scanned it pretty quickly, but. Uh, I, I guess what would be helpful for me, because there was a lot of information that was transferred and we can pull it out of this, but. If, if there's an executive summary, which I didn't see, but I may have missed it. Uh, that would be helpful for, for me to see something like that, that had, that hit all of the high points uh in the presentation. Uh, but anyway.
I think if you look on page uh four, that's for like the management's discussion and analysis.
Yeah, I was looking at, I'm sorry, I was looking at page four.
Pages four through um fourteen are pretty much give you sort of like a, a sort of a summary, summary of the, the whole financial statement.
Yeah, and, and I was listening fast and you were talking pretty fast, so. You, you mentioned something about, uh, I thought you said that the fund balance was like seven million. At some point in, in your presentation and a hundred and sixty-eight percent is what I thought or heard you say. Uh, a, and I don't, when I'm looking at page four, but those numbers don't show up. So anyway, it just be, it's just hard, I mean, I'm sure I can sort through it and find it, but I'm just saying that, that for me. Uh, if there's a, and nobody else may feel this way, it, it just makes it a little easier for me to.
Me too.
To get a, a clear picture of what's going on.
If it would help tomorrow, I could email out a summary of all the pertinent numbers and where you can find them in the CAFRA. I'd be happy to send that out to council tomorrow afternoon.
It would help me.
Would that be helpful?
Ms. Hunt.
Um, yeah, so I, I'm definitely in agreement with um Mr. Sadler in regards to, if it can be bullet pointed, Pam, that would be helpful for me. Uh, you know, just so that I can quickly glance through the, not so much of the verbiage, but more of kind of the analytical side of. Even a synopsis of what Mr. Pendry um did this evening would be great.
I can do that.
Okay.
Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Uh, two things. One, Ms. Orrell, would you just for the, again, viewing public, the acronym, you're, we're using the term CAFRA. Could you just explain what that is for the public?
Um, CAFRA stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Thank you.
And um, the reason it's called a CAFRA is because it does go above and beyond um the normal financial statement that a lot of towns and um counties issue. Um, it also, aside from just the, a regular financial statement, it also has an introductory letter. And it has a statistical section in the back with additional information. So we kind of go above and beyond with our financial statement. And um, we also submit it to the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the national body uh for judging. And um, in about six months or so, we'll hear if our um CAFRA um earned the award of the um. Um, achievement in financial reporting. So, and I'll report back to you at that time when I hear about that. So we, we kind of uh go above and beyond with our financial report and submit it for judging. And I think it's a matter of pride with the town that we do this.
Yes, thank you. And, and my second point was, thank you. You, we've said this before, especially around budget time. Mr. Pendry, thank you for what you do and Pam, Ms. Orrell, you, you have just been outstanding as the finance director for this town. And I certainly appreciate and can see how you've got your thumbprint. So kudos, thank you very much, number one. And mayor, I think you said it beautifully and you did a great job of outlining that. I certainly wasn't expecting that, but very helpful. And to your point. Dr. Sadler, Ms. Welch, Mr. Franklin, both, both staff members have been around. Those of us, I'll speak for myself, I'm brand new to the council. Yes, I'm standing on the shoulders of really good decisions that you folks have made and I'm very appreciative. And I just want to reinforce a big thank you on behalf of the town because it's quiet work, it's important work. Thank you very much for putting us in this great position.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, Ms. Welch.
Uh, yes, uh, first of all, Mike, yes, thank you so much for your presentation. I actually took a picture of it with my cell phone because it's so succinct. And when people, uh, residents are asking me, I can have those numbers so handy too. It really sums it up so well. But I did want to ask Mr. Pendry one question. Um, if I recall in the past, usually at the end of the audit, there's suggestions or recommendations. Was there anything there in the summary?
Um, no, um, we, we, we do, I don't know if you have the letter there in front of you that's called the uh, the, the governance letter.
As I mean, that picked up your CAFRA, you would have it with, it was, it was loose and attached to your uh CAFRA.
It's the two, I think it's two pages. Um, it's the letter that's written to those charging governance, which are the, which is the board itself. And in that letter, we state if we've had any, you know, found anything or any uh disagreements or any, any suggestions or anything. And uh Pam does such a good job. She, I will brag on Pam, this year she actually wrote the whole CAFRA herself. And there were hardly, I don't even think we changed anything in it this year. So uh, she done a, she does a great job. So we did more of what we call a pure audit this year is like most, most of our clients, we, or a lot of the clients, we had to write the financial statement for them. And make journal entries and everything, but we did not make a single journal entry or have to write the actual financial statement. So that's rare. So you, uh, you got a good uh person there.
Well, that's, that's awesome.
Mr. Pendry, does that mean we, uh, does Mr. Pendry, does that mean we get a little refund on our audit bill this year?
Oh, well, I, I don't know about.
Mr. Franklin, I think you had something.
Yeah, I, I had a question for Pam. Uh, and I know this goes back before you became a, a town employee. How many years have we had the CAFRA, CAFRA? Uh, I know it got started before you came along and, and we've had it every year since you've been here, but uh, got any idea there?
Uh, let's see. I think it's actually in the CAFRA.
Like I said, I, it goes way back some of my earlier terms.
And I would have to look that up.
That, that's, that's fine. I would just, I just thought it might be interesting if you had that information available, but that's fine. Thank you.
Fred, Fred, I, I think I've got a memory where there was only one year. That the town did not do it and it wasn't because they, they failed to do it, it was because they, for whatever reason, did not do it. But other than that, they've done it every year for.
That, that's why I was thinking, we always go above and beyond that, that's my point. I mean, even, even way back, you know?
My record, my recollection is it started with Lori Nurse, that's what I remember. And uh, not, not only have we done it and gone above and beyond, but we've off, the town has often gotten that recognition that Pam mentioned earlier. As a result of the quality of the CAFRA that the town does. Uh, the other thing that the CAFRA enables the town to do if we were so inclined, Pam, I believe. Is it, it, it affects our rating in terms of being able to borrow or do bonds or something like that.
Oh, yes, I believe if you ever wanted to get a bond rating, which we do not, we do not have a bond rating. If you ever did want to go out and get one, it would require a CAFRA. Yeah. I, I did find it in the CAFRA. Um, we've gotten the award for fifteen years. So we've been doing a CAFRA at least fifteen years now.
Hey Marie, that um, the suggestions you were talking about, generally you don't like to see those.
Yeah, yeah, as a follow-up, I was going to say normally we as auditors, we only normally report on bad things. And when everything's good, we, we usually don't report on the good, we just report on the bad.
If they have a finding and they're making recommendation just because they found something that was wrong and they're telling you, here's a recommendation you need to fix.
But, well, that's, I was asking if there's anything, really anything negative. And then um, is it too late to have a raise for panel?
That's sweet.
That's right. Any other, any other questions for Pam or Mr. Pendry? Uh, Pam, I think we're going to need a motion and a vote to accept the audited report. Anybody would like to make a motion?
Motion, I will.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion?
A second.
Ms. Welch makes a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Welch.
I.
Ms. Foster.
I.
Dr. Sadler.
Hi.
Franklin.
Uh.
Ms. Hunt.
Hi.
Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, Pam. Again, thanks for all your great work. Mr. Pendry, it's always good to see you again. This is, this is a number of years you've done our audit and uh, we thank you for your support of uh what we do and we'll be looking for that refund.
Okay, thank, thank you and thank you for allowing us to be your auditors.
Very good.
Just a reminder too, if you're not able to get into the town hall to pick up your CAFRA, which is in your mailbox, you can also see it online. On the town's uh website under the finance department. It's also posted there.
Thank you. Um, ladies and gentlemen, quite frequently these days, it seems. That the town is receiving awards and recognitions for things that we do exceptionally well. We have two of those presentations and recognations tonight. Um, Hank, is Ms. Linker with us on the phone?
If she is, I only see a number, so I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, I think she said she was going to call in.
I have a five, one, two, three, if anyone recognizes that number. Is that her? Okay.
Susan, can you, uh, can you hear us? There you are. Take yourself off mute if you can.
Here she is.
I'm, I'm here.
Very, very good. Hank, do we have anybody else from beautification committee with us tonight?
Um, Genevieve is on the beautification, right?
Yes, she is.
Okay, I'll allow her to speak as well.
Um, I don't know if Yvonne Hall is on the.
I do not see anyone else on the committee.
Okay, very good. Genevieve, welcome. Good to see you. Turn on your, if you, if you feel comfortable, please turn on your video camera so we can see your wonderful face.
Okay.
I just have allowed her to speak, mayor. Uh, I have not promoted the, either one to, to panelists.
Okay, so, so we will just hear you as opposed to see you tonight. Um, folks, as most of you know, uh, the town of Louisville is very unique in the regard that we have a variety of boards and committees. That do a lot of the heavy lifting for our town. One of those committees is the beautification committee and it was established in Susan, Genevieve, I think nineteen ninety-one, it was, it was right at our incorporation. Um, they do a variety of things around town. Uh, this year. They receive the Flora Ann Bynum Award by the Forsyth County Community Appearance Commission. I find it ironic that the beautification committee gets an award by somebody named Flora. Um, but that's, we can look that up and we all go home. So the um, the award that we received or the beautification committee received this year. Was uh for improving the appearance and enhancement of the character and small town culture of Louisville. They were recognized for a number of projects in Jack Warren Park, the perennial flower garden, the wild, wildflower garden. They were recognized for the azalea slope and the rose buds, beds. They were recognized for our seven box bluebird trail. If you haven't seen that, particularly in the spring, that's pretty fabulous. They organize a twice yearly clean sweep event. They, uh, during the spring and the summer months, they are, they present the yard of the week award around Louisville to those folks that take pride in the yards and do amazing landscaping. They published our discovering Louisville booklet for new residents. And they publish a gardener's guide to landscaping and plants uh specifically for Louisville. Folks, you do a lot of wonderful things for this town. And if you have, if, if anybody has been out at Jack Warren Park and seen our wildflower uh garden out there, it is, it is really pretty amazing. Uh, particularly go out in the, but right now it doesn't look too hot, but in the spring, it's really pretty amazing. Um, Susan, um, on behalf, let me, let me name your committee members and that way we can, we can all recognize them. Certainly. You're the chair, Cynthia Keiger is the vice chair, Yvonne Hall has been past chair uh and has been very instrumental in your accomplishments. Genevieve Athens, you're here, thank you very much. Carolyn Fulton, Mary Marley, Deborah Pritchard. And we have Zeke Mock, who is a fixture around town. Mr. Gardner is our advisor to the beautification committee. Uh, Susan, would you like to say anything?
Yes, thank you Mayor Horn for your recognition of the Flora Ann Bynum Award to the Louisville Beautification Committee. And I should mention to you that Flora Ann Bynum was a wonderful gardener connected with Old Salem. That's where the name comes from. She's uh for collecting and, and documenting of plants at Old Salem was a, a very important job that she did. At first I just want to say thank you to the Community Appearance Commission of Winston-Salem. For reaching outside of Winston-Salem to encourage beautification efforts all over our area. Secondly, I think we, we all need to remember that this award is not just an award to the beautification committee. It is also an award to the town of Louisville. And I say that because uh, none of what this committee has accomplished would have been possible. Without the encouragement, the trust and the support of the Louisville Town Council. Or without the help of all the hardworking town staff. It is also an award, I think, to all of the dedicated citizens like Yvonne Hall. Who served for many years on the committee and acted as mentors and partners when we joined the LBC. Uh, always working to make good things happen in our, our community. And it's also an award to people like Zeke Mock, who's the advisor for the LBC, who has given so generously of his time and has helped for so many years. So the LBC will continue our efforts to help make Louisville a more beautiful and welcoming place to live and we thank you for your support.
Genevieve, anything you'd like to add?
Well, the uh, Susan pretty much covered it, but I would like to just give a nod to Susan. Who keeps us all together and encourages us and is a great planner and uh keeps her action item list. And, and we don't get off of that list until we get things done. And I just want to thank her for everything that she has contributed to this, to this committee.
Recognition well deserved. Um, we have a saying around Louisville, if you want something done, you get Su- Susan Linker involved. Because um, she is, she is a bulldog that just pushes and pushes and pushes and most of us.
But a really sweet bulldog.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Hold on, that's, that is the instructive word right there.
Good. Council members, any comments? Ms. Hunt, yes?
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank um the whole entire committee. I know I've had an opportunity to work with a couple of the members on the committee um in various organizations. And you guys are right, Genevieve, when you guys talk about Susan, she is just amazing overall. So um, I just wanted to thank you guys um for all the work that you are doing and for what you're bringing to the town of Louisville for future generations. Thank you.
You.
I think your telephone just turned a little pink.
Thank you all.
Mr. Franklin.
Yeah, Mike, uh, you know, when we were planning the new community center, I knew that we would overlook things. Uh, one of the things that. Uh, one of the things that, at this point in time to start thinking about, are we gonna have places that we can display awards like this in our community center? And, and so forth. So, you know, just throwing that out while, while we're here. So that, that these, these types of awards of the town or our committees may, may earn can be properly displayed so that the public can see them.
I think we have a lovely place that's gonna be created on our mantle right next to the, uh, photos of Mary Alice and Jack Warren. But thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Franklin. It does, does keep it foremost in our minds. Anybody else comments? Council? Very good. Susan, Genevieve, thank you all for what you do and please pass on our deep appreciation and gratitude to your committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, um, second recognition we'd like to do tonight is for our Louisville Fire Department. Hank, do we have Chief Darren on with us?
Just one second, I'll bring him. I've got three guests with the fire department. I'm going to get them all on right now.
I'm gonna guess it's Chief Darren, David and Chris. Speaking of awards, Mr. Kivett, is that a wall of Boy Scout awards behind you?
Uh, my, uh, film on trip.
There we go. Very good. Chief, I didn't know you were at the beach, but, um, nice to see you could join us.
Oh, yes. Nice to be here. I wish I were.
Hey, Chris, didn't know you were in outer space, but nice for you to join us. Good. Folks, we are, um, as we've said before many times, we are so fortunate to have the Louisville Fire Department. Um, I do not exaggerate when I say they are one of the premier fire departments in the state of North Carolina. Chief Darren is looked to and respected for his professionalism and knowledge of firefighting. And, uh, and David and Chris, but David, gosh, you're an assistant fire chief and you have been involved, how many years with the fire department?
Probably thirty-ish.
There we go. There we go. And, you know, we talk about you guys a lot and we say how much we appreciate you. But this recognition that we're going to mention tonight really puts in perspective just how professional and how fortunate we ha, we are to have you at, protecting our town. The Higgins and Langley Memorial Awards are presented for swift water rescue and flood rescue. They were established in 1993 by members of the Swift Water Rescue Committee, the National Association of Search and Rescue. And they honor outstanding achievements. The Louisville Fire Department, um, this last year, 2020, was, was received the special commendation award recognizing preparedness, teamwork and job performance under extreme conditions where training is vital to the success of rescue missions and the safety of rescue personnel. To put this a little more in perspective, in addition to Louisville, little old Louisville, they joined a distinguished group of international recipients. Recipients that include fire and rescue departments in Pennsylvania, Australia, New Zealand and the United Kingdom. So there were a lot of names in this hat for the committee to consider and we are so fortunate that you guys were recognized for your work. Chief, you wanna say a few things?
Well, sure, Mr. Mayor, whatever you, not knowing me to wanna say. Yeah, I, I would start off by saying that, uh, yeah, I would echo everything that you've said. Yeah, it's a great organization. Absolutely the best, in my opinion. Uh, it's proud, it makes me proud to be, uh, the one that gets the opportunity to, to get this FaceTime. And really that, that's what this is. This is just my face on a much bigger, uh, organization. Uh, so we certainly appreciate the time and the recognition coming from the town. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our board of directors. You know, the, the drone or the UAV program is certainly outside of the box uh, when it comes to what most people expect their local fire department to be involved in. You know, our department i- is a very diverse group. We have competing interests. Uh, we have our swift water teams and our fire protection and our UAV, any number of programs that we're, we're trying to develop. Uh, Chief Kivett was really key in, uh, really implementing the UAV and the drone program for the department. It was his initial vision that got that ball rolling. Uh, but it was our board of directors, uh, who were willing to take that chance with us. You know, we come in and we pitch an idea. We say, hey, this is a direction that we really want to move in. Uh, and it's gonna cost a little bit of money, but you know, we want you to trust us and let us build this thing. Uh, and let's see what it can become and how many ways we can incorporate it into the public safety world, you know, that, that we live in. So, uh, a huge shout out to our board of directors for allowing us to do that. Uh, and I would certainly, uh, offer a moment for, for Chief Kivett and, uh, firefighter Craven to offer their, their two cents. But I'll also, before I hand it off to them, uh, just so you don't have to come back to me, I will shamelessly plug a recruitment, uh, opportunity here for the fire department. I think this, this type of, uh, notoriety, it, it exhibits the fact that you don't have to be a firefighter to join the Louisville Fire Department. We have a number of program interests. Yeah, the UAV is really designed, uh, more for a, a, a much more technologically minded individual. Yeah, it could be your, your teenage video gamer. Uh, yeah, that's the, the type of mindset that we need to manipulate the controls for these things. So, uh, don't think that you have to run into a burning building to join the fire department. Come on out and talk to us and we'll see if we can't find a place for you to, to volunteer in the community.
Very good. David, Chris, take a few minutes and describe what you all received the award for. I know it's something that has to do with drones, but, but explain a little more to us about it.
Sure, I'll be glad to. Uh, the, this kind of put into place our vision when I went to Chief Needham and he went to the board. What we wanted, what we envisioned was the ability to, um, use the drones to cover large areas of the river or whatever flood area at a faster rate of speed. So we can put the drone up, um, look, cover, you know, a mile of, a mile of river bottoms um, at a high altitude a- and see, see what's there, decide if we need to go upstream or if we need to go downstream. So that was kind of the, the, the vision that we had. It was really what the, the group at Higgins and Langley, um, liked, the, what Chris submitted us for. Um, we went ahead and added in, um, a, a drone that had thermal capability. So we're able to see, see heat signatures. And in addition to using it for, uh, swift water, we can use it for searches a- and things like that. So it's, um, it's been a pretty neat program that we continue to develop. Um, and we're real excited. We'd love to get the town an opportunity to see it in action. You know, if you've got one of your, uh, workshops or something, we can bring, uh, the vehicle there and, and, and show off what it'll do. Uh, we, we'd love to do that. And we've also mentioned to the town of some aerial photos that you need, aerial videos. Um, we are certainly, uh, more than willing to, to help you out with that. And, um, I'll throw it to Chris now. Chris has been on our deployment teams, um, down on the eastern part of the state for, um, for hurricanes and he can kind of, while we haven't used the drone for this, he can kind of talk through exactly what our, our vision is for it.
Thanks, Chief. Um, thank you, Mayor Horn and the rest of the town council for having us. First off, and the recognition tonight. As Chief Kivett and Chief Needham said, uh, this is, this is a big deal for us. You know, we've been in the drone game for, um, just about a year now, a year and a half. Um, so being recognized on an international level, um, like we've achieved is a pretty big deal for a small fire department like we are. Our vision, like Chief Kivett mentioned, is, um, continuous growth. Um, since we started the program a year and a half ago, we've added our third drone about two weeks ago. Uh, we added a third drone to our fleet, um, that allows us the ability to train more folks in the department as well as send drones, um, down east like for hurricanes and such, um, that are requested in the state. As well as, um, still keeping drones in the district in Louisville and Forsyth County to be able to serve the citizens. We've had the program of, there was initially five of us that went through, um, the initial course. And since then, we've sent an additional 12 personnel, um, through the, um, the class to become certified pilots. Uh, so and the, the program itself is growing drastically and, um, we are extremely grateful for the personnel we have that are interested in the program and the innovations and technology that's been provided to us. So we, we're, we just look forward to, um, what's in store for the program and all the things that it provides us.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Council members, any thoughts? Very good, guys. Ms. Hunt, Ms. Hunt, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, so I, of course I've got something to say. Um, this is my evening, guys. So I just wanted to thank all of you guys, um, for what y'all do from a firefighter stance. It's also really neat to hear how we're utilizing technology to really come into play, um, for some of those things. So thank y'all for sharing that and, um, for coming on this evening and, um, really educating our community. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Welch?
Uh, yes, just a, a big thank you for your dedication and how you're on top of everything. Just another reason why so proud to be a part of Louisville. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Foster?
Ditto to the thank you and hu, and just humbling what you guys do. But I'm taking particular note, council, about the aerial video and photo capabilities that these guys are offering. I can, I can imagine Ms. Talbert, we could, we could definitely get behind some projects in that regard. So thank you for that and, um, I'm hoping we're, we're gonna be following up. Thanks.
Very good. Council members?
Congratulations, guys. Yeah, thanks.
Folks, I'm fading in and out here for some reason. So if I get a little choppy, you'll know, I'm, I know what's going on. It's, it's whatever's happening here is happening here. Chief, David, Chris, thank you guys so much. Pass on our congratulations to the department. And again, you got a great, great group of guys and gals and thanks for all you guys are doing.
We thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Very good. Stacy, you wanna pop up our, pop up our public forum information, please? Ladies and gentlemen, this is the first opportunity tonight where you can join this council and share your thoughts or your comments with the council. This is our opportunity to listen to you. Hank, do we have anybody waiting to listen or to talk, speak?
We have one person in attendance, Ms. Pritchard.
Alrighty.
Stacy, what do we end up doing? Uh, Ms. Pritchard, can you, uh, indicate your desire to speak by raising your hand?
This Pritchard may be a holdover from our beautification award.
I see it. Here we go.
Very good.
Go ahead, Ms. Pritchard. You're allowed to talk.
Okay. Um, I'm here for the beautification committee and I guess I missed that.
Just by five minutes.
Okay, okay. You guys have a good evening.
Okay, there is no one else in the attendees gallery.
Deborah, I think you, you relate for the beautification award by about five minutes.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Pritchard is gone.
She's gone, okay. Well, we're glad you're with us for even that brief moment. If you are watching TV six or not, you can see a replay, rerun of the, uh, award and our, our discussion of that on TV six. And I believe we are on four times a day. So we'll reach out to you and let you know that you can see that, um, seven days a week if you wish. Anyone else?
Uh, there is no one else in attendance.
Okay, very good. This evening, we have no appointments. We have no technical reviews, no site plan approvals or evidentiary hearings, public hearings or annexation reports. Jean Marie, I think we're down to you for a update on our boards and committees.
Okay. Short and sweet. On behalf of Hank, Joyce, Stacy and Jeannie Taylor, who's not, not here with us tonight. We have been working hard. We've gotten the, uh, survey out and we've already gotten some folks who have responded. Got some positive feedback, which I haven't even shared with the work group about the instrument being, um, helpful and a nice balance of questions, sliding scale as well as open-ended inquiry. So we're looking forward to getting together next week, the subgroup, to look at some of the results and look back with the council with some information. And then we'll be sharing that with the boards and committees at the first opportunity we have when they are meeting in either February or March. Uh, anyone else want to add anything?
Thanks for your work on this. Um, it is a labor of love, but it will pay off big time. Stacy, Hank, we have an update on our comprehensive plan and Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Yes, I'm gonna let Stacy, uh, take care of this. She's going to go over the material pertinent to this, this agenda item.
Okay. Um, I think Joyce sent out to you earlier today, um, the qualifications packet that we received from the firm that we have, uh, are recommending tonight. Whenever we first sent this out, um, we got back four, uh, firms that were interested in our project. From that, Hank and myself, we went through those qualifications packets that were sent and shortlisted it to, we chose just to two, since all, the number that we got was four. So we, we shortlisted that group to two. Um, and from there we reached out to them to ask for proposals. Um, the difference between a qualifications packet is they, they kind of give us their scope of, of what they're gonna be doing, um, how they will, um, you know, be going about the project based on the qualifications that we requested from them. Um, and then they send us a proposal, which in turn is their, um, the cost for them to do that very project based on, um, the, the request that we sent, the qualifications that they sent back to us and then, um, their scope of work and everything. It's how, how they would do that. So Kim Lee Horn is the firm that we have chosen. Their office is out of Charlotte, North Carolina. They are a nationwide company, but they do have local offices in North Carolina. Well, more not local to Winston-Salem, but, uh, offices in North Carolina that, um, in Charlotte and, and some other places. And they do have both, um, one thing about this firm is they, um, aren't going to be, um, joint with anybody else. Some of the other firms that we looked at were going to be, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Contracting with, it, it's almost like two firms to, to handle both the comprehensive plan and the master parks rec plan. But Kim Lee Horn has both of those divisions under their umbrella. Um, so it's just one firm that we would be working with. So, um, what I can do is just a few ma, like quick highlights. I've gone through the, um, the qualifications packet that I wanted to kind of just point out to you guys about the project. Again, it is a joint comprehensive plan update and master parks, recreation and culture development master plan update. But there, the, the things that we liked about Kim Lee Horn, obviously, was their strategy for engagement. But for project branding, steering committee meetings, there will be a steering committee involved to kind of help guide the process. Um, information sheets that they'll be giving out to public and, um, boards and committee members and council. Stakeholder focus group sessions, um, public workshops where the public will be invited to give input. Um, a digital survey that will go out, um, during the project to get additional public feedback. Digital communication through our website, um, if we choose social media, um, email blast, stuff like that. I know that since we are in the pandemic time, we don't know how, what, what our future really looks like with us being able to gather together and have in-person public inputs like we usually would have, um, and do, doing a project like this. So that's why we are leaning a little bit on the digital aspect of this. We do feel confident that they will be able to, um, accommodate, um, the, the season that we're in with the, uh, pandemic, with doing, you know, large Zoom or, you know, it might be a different platform than Zoom, but, um, large public meetings, um, with, with attendees. large public meetings with with attendees, larger groups of attendees in order to kind of check that box of hoping to get as much possible public engagement that we can. Some other things that that if you look in the qualifications, one thing that I did when when I did our request for qualifications is kind of broke it down to different tasks. One task, first task would be project initiation, them getting to know the town. Task, well, in with that data collection and then actually getting to know the town, doing tours of the town, getting census data, demographic data, and those sorts of things, looking at the plans that we already have, looking at the other plans we have, for example, the Northeast Area Plan. Looking at their public surveys that have been done in the past, so forth and so on. It's just just gathering of all that data in order to to kick off the project. Task two is community visioning and public outreach. That was that is where all of the public involvement gathering will be. Of course, along all these tasks is staff involvement, steering committee member involvement. And along with a lot of the public outreach will be board and committee involvement. The comprehensive plan update is task three. That's actually them drafting the report from what they get from task two and task one. Task four is the Parks and Rec Cultural Development Master Plan update, actually drafting that report. In that also comes, you know, some digital things, you know. Throughout the whole process, we want to have an area in our website that we can keep the public informed. We can let them know it's a place that they can go to to look at different things, to take the surveys, to be made aware of of important dates and times that we have those meetings, or if there's updates that they need, just what our status is, that sort of thing is is kind of the approach that Kim Lee Horn wants to use for for a website outreach type of thing. And then finally, in task five would be the final approvals and adoptions, planning board, Parks and Rec committee, and then also council presentations for adoption of both of those plans. So one thing that we did look at in doing this jointly is hopefully the cost savings that we will have rather than doing the plans separately. And Hank, if you want to, well, if anybody doesn't have any questions for me, if we can. Yes, Melissa.
A couple of questions. First of all, thank you. This is very good information. I was just looking over the document that they sent. Do you know their experience with towns of our size? It looks like they got a lot of urban development experience and a lot of comprehensive plan experience in like smaller city or larger cities, more closer to Raleigh, Mooresville, Mount Holly, there on their scope. But how, what's their experience in towns of our size?
Um, I know that they have done some town, a lot of town comprehensive plans. They have done countywide comprehensive plans. One in particular that they mentioned, I'm trying to get to it, was I don't want to, I don't want to say the wrong name is why I want to get to it. They they did exactly what we are wanting them to do in Mount Holly. They did a 2030 comprehensive land use plan and a recreation master plan update. And and also a downtown park feasibility study. That was a project that they just completed in 2020. So that that was was good on my part or made me feel good on my part to to know that they have done, you know, a project very similar to our to ours, getting these these plans updated simultaneously. You know, with with the driving force being, you know, you don't, you don't really want to get a lot of your residents kind of burned out in planning, if you will. You know, a lot of times, say, for instance, if we go through the comprehensive plan, you know, they're they're going to attend public meetings, they're going to do the public surveys, they're going to have digital outreach, those sorts of things. And then if we were to do a master plan for Parks and Rec separately, it's it's the same forms of things that you're getting out. And a lot of times residents are kind of like, well, didn't I just do this? Didn't I just answer some questions that were similar to this? So I was pleased that that they have done, even if, you know, it is Mount Holly, but that they have done something similar to the project that we are doing or asking to do now.
And then I've got one, one kind of follow up question. As I looked at the project schedule, it looks like from about July to September, there were some vacancies as it relates, you know, some kind of areas where they did not participate more in the community engagement and outreach.
And most of, most of that time, I'm trying to get to the schedule, is going to be actual like plan development. They're actually drafting the plan kind of through that time. A lot of it is, is, you know, they're going to be here gathering information and then, you know, waiting on some of those feedback from surveys, waiting on. A lot of what they are going to do too is provide us with with feedback and reports of what they are finding through that public outreach. So a lot of that will be, you know, initiating those reports and that sort of thing, actual drafting information to get to us.
Thank you.
So quickly, Stacy, please. So what's the estimated time for completion from start to?
We want them to get started February. That is when the schedule would start. And then running the plans simultaneously, it's scheduled to be completed in April of next year. It's about 15 months.
Thank you.
Or Sandler. Mount Holly actually is not too different in size. Anyway, I grew up near Mount Holly. So it's not too different in size from Louisville.
Okay.
But but the other thing is, did they give you, they provide you a copy of the the plan that they actually did for Mount Holly? Is that on their website?
It's on Mount Holly's website. Yeah, they didn't actually give me just a copy of it, but it can be found on the website.
Okay, you all, did you all take a look at that?
I have not looked at it as of yet, no.
Okay.
Stacy did call and verify references. Of course, you know, once going to put somebody in is a reference is going to give them some bad news, but we did do that due diligence for each one of these and and Kim Lee came up fun.
And Kim Lee Horn, even though they're not a firm that we have used in planning round before, but we do, we are currently working with them in our Williams Gateway Project. So even though it's it's a little bit different discipline of Kim Lee Horn, we have worked with the actual overall firm before. So.
Ms. Hunt?
So Stacy, how involved will they get with our current planning board and Parks and Rec Board? And I see that there is some time spent in there with doing, you know, council and board presentations and steering committee meetings and that kind of thing. What, how involved do they get with?
Well, portions of, I won't say all of those members will be on the steering committee, but there will be certain members from those two boards specifically to be on that steering committee to help guide the process. And to be a voice for each of those boards. But they will also, you know, we would hope that, you know, our our board and committees, their residents, just like everybody else is. So we would want them to participate in all of the public rounds and all the public outreaches that we do. But because they are residents and because they can can give a lot of insight just by being on a board and committee and being a little bit, having a little bit different relationship with the town than than say some other residents might.
And then the only other comment I have is on page 13, they put some pictures. Are those pictures representative of Louisville or those just fill in pictures?
Those are just fill in pictures of different charrettes they have done in different areas. Like different projects and plans they have worked on. It's just kind of some examples of, like you can see, like some charrettes. Like the little kid up at the board looking like writing plan or ideas for future growth or whatever. It's just some pictures of some examples of some charrettes that they've done.
Great. Thank you again.
Ms. Foster?
Stacy, just explain what charrette is to the people who might be listening and not familiar with that term.
A charrette is is just a really a planning term for, well, I don't know if it's necessarily planning term. That's what I use it for, but whenever you get together a public, public participation, like a group of people, for instance, and a lot of times they'll get around a table. They'll have different ideas with the different like different scopes, say, for instance, like downtown ideas or even parks ideas or ideas for residential growth or ideas for sustainability. You know, they can, they can voice their opinions and then they they kind of a lot of times what you see is they'll be like, you know, just the whoever's facilitating the charrette will you know, put all of those ideas kind of just on a whiteboard or on I don't want to say bumwad, but that's the only thing that I can say. That's for Jean Marie. But just paper, you know, up, up on a board and then different people will get these little dots and then you can go and put your stickers and they kind of see where the majority lies of how they see the vision of the town going. It's just a a typical way that meetings are conducted to gather public information and public opinion. Pretty much is what a charrette is, in a long way to explain it. So.
Anything else, council members? Or Sandler?
Two questions. What did we spend on 2015 was the last update? Is that correct? At least with the comp plan?
I think so.
Yes, that is correct.
And what did we spend on that? Do you, do you have that number available at that time?
Very.
I guess I can answer that.
I could, I could speak to that, too.
Yes.
That did it. So really, there was no expenditure for it.
Okay. And this is going to take 15 months about. Is that right? Did you say up to 15 months?
Up to, yes.
That's the schedule is is 15 months.
How much are we paying for this?
It says not to exceed 164,300.
Yeah. Yeah, and we we took a look at that, Ken, and and what we wanted to make sure is we could confirm that there was some efficiency and economy in doing the plans simultaneously. And from what we did, we could look at, and this is from from their own figures. I know that we've got a budget that was already put together in this. It's about $130,000. So we're about $34,300 short from this. One thing to keep in mind in our discussions with them and the analysis of these programs, if we were to do these these plans separately, it would have cost us an additional $17,000 to do these plans separately. So that is a premium that we are saving by doing that combined. So that is certainly worth the effort and spending the additional money to do both the Parks and Rec Plan and the Comprehensive Plan Update simultaneously. Because ultimately, it's saving us a lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, it's about 11,000 bucks a month and, you know, the in terms of staffing, staff trying to do all of this work, you'd have to hire somebody to be able to get all this done in the timeframe you're talking about with the comprehensiveness that it appears it's going to be done. So I don't have a problem with it. I just was curious. I didn't recall whether we paid for it in 2015 or not.
A lot of, a lot of what we've done in the past on five year updates have been edits to the the current plan. And I think if everybody understands remembers from our conversations where we put this plan together, this comprehensive plan update will be a total rewrite. So it's not where we're, we're taking a look at editing and changes on the fringes. We're going to not disregard what was done in the past. But we're going to come up with a brand new plan that was looked at from bottom to top. And again, we're going to keep in mind the history of the town and what we've done in the past. But I think we're going to end up with a good product that is going to be revamped and revitalized and end up being a a living, breathing document to move forward.
Anything else? Ms. Foster?
I was first involved with the town. I stumbled into the comprehensive plan back in 2005. And at that time, I remember Gordon Bingham was the head of the steering committee and it was a big, long process. I remember it being very immersive and there was a big kickoff meeting and that's the closest that I recall that we've done something like this as to back then, but this is even more so. And I think with the growth that we've experienced as a town, like like Hank is saying, previous councils had said, yeah, just kind of edit where we are. But I can tell you, the planning board, for at least the past couple of years that I was on, we were talking about a much more robust immersion into more engagement, all of the indicators that Stacy delineated and tying it to the bigger parks and rec. I I think this is money well spent. So with that, I'd certainly be happy to make a motion if unless there's other discussion.
Just have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Ms. Hunt, you want to jump in first?
Yes, I apologize, not to belabor this topic, but I just want to make sure, Stacy, as we're working with these companies, I just went back and looked at that document. To me, it did not feel like it really encompassed the uniqueness of Louisville. It seemed very form letterish, for lack of better words, in in how I was looking through. So as they present stuff, I would just want them to make sure they're presenting to us as a community that is very unique in the way, like, for example, when we wrote up the Plan F Grant, it was very, very heartfelt. Mike took a lot, you know, or staff took a lot of time to to really get the uniqueness of Louisville and the founding of how Louisville came about. And I think that that's something that I'd like to see in the documentation as we go about moving forward with planning Louisville, if that makes sense. So it just feels to me like very form letter. Like they inserted Louisville in there a few times, 38 times. If I went, I went in there and just did a search real quick on the on the keyword, but looks like they just, you know, entered in Louisville in a couple of places. So that would be all I would like, want to make sure we're aware of.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Stacy, let me just, I'm going to follow up on what Melissa said. This is going to be a really tough audience to please with this report. Only because we know the the importance of it not being a typical North Carolina Department of Transportation charrette where they advertise it, three people show up and they call that public participation. That's not, this can't be that. This has got to reach out. This has got to involve hundreds and hundreds of Louisville residents. The, the, the diversity of residents is really important. Age, location, race, gender. We need to be sure we're inclusive of Vienna and Pofftown. There's, there are a lot of things that unfortunately happen with consultants that have done projects like this before and they come in. And it is, it's like a boilerplate project, your name here kind of thing. But if if we don't see, I'll just speak for myself. I may not be around, you know, in April of next year, but if I don't see, if we don't see engagement by a number of hundreds of Louisville residents, then we really haven't done our job in developing a comprehensive plan. You know, we have Louisville Connect to engage people. We have websites. We have, I mean, if we have to go door to door with things, I'll pull together a group of volunteers and that's what we'll do. But the the importance of this can't be understated. A consultant coming in and doing a boilerplate plan does not capture the essence of Louisville. So I think we want to be really, really, you need to warn, warn them because they may not want to do it after hearing those comments. One of the things that I'm that I'm hoping we get out of this is part of their work or part of their, part of their product should be a list of things by board and committee that will be those groups' task lists over the next couple of years to accomplish. I know in previous comprehensive plans, we've gone through and said beautification, these are the things that are coming out of this plan that fall into your committee that you need to address. And and that's true with all of our committees. But so let's just say forewarned Mr. Kimberly, Mr. Horn, for disclosure purposes, Mr. Horn is no relation to me. And so we're expecting a lot of community engagement of this and the typical or traditional consultant charrettes of five people saying we got community input. Anybody else? So I guess Pam, you have a budget amendment for us to approve on this first, right?
Yes, that's correct. The budget amendment was, as Hank mentioned a while ago, we had originally budgeted for both projects $130,000. But to bring it up to the 164,300 that we need, we need a budget amendment for $34,300 tonight.
Council members?
Move for approval?
Ms. Welch makes the motion.
Take it.
Ms. Foster makes the second. A for a discussion. Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Ms. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Buck Sattler?
Aye.
Franklin? Franklin. Mayor's eye with the caveats that we just talked about. Very good. And Stacy, I believe you want to handle the approval of the contract.
Uh, I don't know. Hank, do you want to handle that?
We got, we have a, a resolution for you. We do have a contract that we are in the current process of vetting with our attorney. But what we have the resolution for, and I'll skip to the now therefore be it resolved part. Did the contract be awarded to Kim Lee Horn of Charlotte, North Carolina and that the town manager is authorized to execute a contract in accordance with the proposal submitted in an amount not to exceed $164,300. So that is it. So you are basically giving your blessing to approve a contract to be signed in accordance with that scope of work.
Any questions for Hank? Maritain a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion.
Second.
Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Franklin. Fred, could you say aye again?
Yes, I will. Again.
That loss of blood maybe, I thought was maybe a.
No, I, I, I said aye.
Dr. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Again, the mayor's eye with the caveat that we mentioned before. And we'll be watching it closely. That is unanimous, folks. Thank you very much and good luck. And as we say, if they, they're saying 15 months, if they can do it in 12, we'll take them all to dinner.
Sounds good. Thank you guys very much.
Yes, ma'am. Good luck. Uh, Ms. Walker, you have the next item on the agenda.
I do. As I had explained to council in working with Jean Marie and the other members of our little special group, we were talking about policies and all kinds of applications that boards and committees do. And I pulled out the policy that we have and it was written in 2005. So what I've done is only bring our policy up to date and modernize it. Allow people to be able to make their application to any of the boards or committees on the internet, by email, sending it to me, those kinds of things. So, um, that's what you have in front of you.
You've moved this into the 19th century.
Yeah, I brought them up to the 21st.
Okay, good. Good. Any question, Ms. Walker? Well, Maritain a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Foster, we'd expect you to do the second on this one.
Well, Melissa's on a roll.
Okay. Tonight's Melissa night. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Welch.
Aye.
Ms. Hunt.
Aye.
Ms. Franklin. Doctor. Yes, sir, now I can.
Aye.
Ms. Foster.
Aye.
Mayor's eye, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Hank Admin reports.
Okay, the only thing we've got for the events at Shalford Square is that we will be closed as town offices on Monday, the 18th, an observance of Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, which is a federal holiday. Under the manager's report, we do have a web design, a website redesign that's coming up. And hopefully we're going to be shooting for a target date of April 1st. This is through our arrangement with VC3, who has been our website designer and maintainer for the last four years. This is going to be a ground up, brand new website. We're going to end up getting into a, a steering committee to guide this made up of a broad group of people. And that would be for our boards and committees and staff as well to make sure that the new website meets the needs of the town for today and years to come. So I think the, the mayor and I have talked about representation, I think. Mike, you want to talk a little bit about representation from the town council?
I do. You know, Ms. Hunt, you displayed your, your knowledge and prowess when we tried to get up on Zoom and you guided us through that. Council members, there's no objection. I'd like Ms. Hunt to represent council on that committee.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. I have a question. I'm sure there are a lot of people in town who have that sort of background. I know of an individual who was a chief information officer for one of the major companies in the area who may be able to help with this. If, if you're, I'm just asking, are you, are you looking for recommendations for the committee or, or what are you, how are you, how are you going about it?
We can, Dr. Sadler, if you've got anybody. We, we're just now getting started with the kickoff on the committee.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll check with him and see if he, if there's availability.
All right.
And Hank, give us just a little bit of background of the contract we've had with, with the company and why we're, why you believe we should continue with them.
Well, one, we've been paying for this website redesign over the last four years. When we did the website development four years ago, we took a number of proposals from area firms that could do websites. We chose VC3. They are the, a recommended and approved vendor from the North Carolina League of Municipalities. They were doing things a little differently. They had a no money upfront cost for doing the website, but what they ended up doing was to fill in, in services and additional fees as you move forward on a monthly basis over time so that we're not paying all for the, for the, the, the website itself over time. We do have other fees that we are engaged with, with VC3. But I sort of described this as a process like you would if you leased a copier instead of buying it. Instead of spending 15 to $20,000 upfront and having low maintenance costs over time, we had more maintenance costs over time with zero upfront. So as we move through each term, at the close of that term, we, we have built in to essentially getting a brand new website from the ground up and, and being built. That is what we are right now at this time. So we are moving into a website that is due to us by April 1st.
And Hank, once again, I want to caution us. In the advertising agency business, this is what we call a gotcha contract. Is you enter into it and the freebie comes at the end, but you basically paid for it by the time you get to the end of the contract. So you're, you almost feel obligated to, to exercise it. I think you were going to check.
I did. The, Kim, VC3 has certainly assured us that they are in no position where they want to hold us hostage on our website. Moving forward, we can move it down to as little as we care to work with them on, even if it's the lowest monthly, monthly costs for just hosting the site on servers. And then we pay for what we want à la carte. They, they will give us as much or as little as we care under the next term.
Do we, do we own the site?
Yes.
Okay. So in the event when we're ready to do maybe another redesign, or maybe we don't want to wait four years to do a redesign and we potentially want to go with another firm because technology is changing so rapidly, we could disconnect from VC3 and the website would be ours. And of course they're building it on an open source platform. So that should not be a problem for folks to know what they're doing.
Right. I'm very confident in VC3 though, that one of the things that we chose, while we chose them four years ago, we had a lot of good firms. Their, their grasp of the current technologies and current trends is outstanding and their list of clients across the state for municipal and county websites is just as broad as well. So they bring to the table lots of benefits, but certainly as I said before, they are not in the business of holding us hostages when we move forward.
Is Mount Holly on their list?
I don't know that.
Did I hear you say it's an, I'm, I'm just clarifying. Did I hear you say it is an open source platform that they use?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It is a, um, the terminology is the, the platform for the website is one of two open source, very common formats. I don't recall the names of those right off the top of my head, but when we did those, they were, um, open and exactly what you were, you were asking.
Right, yeah. It just means that you don't have to go in and somebody has to have code and all that sort of thing.
There's not a proprietary technology involved with, with the website.
Anybody else? Okay. Next item, Hank.
All right, let me see. Agenda again.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, for agreeing to serve.
Okay, I believe we wanted to do an update on the Mary Alice Warren Community Center and I'm going to certainly invite Mayor Horn to, to chime in on this as well. I think everybody's up to date. We've done a lot of work on the bio cell. Is that what I'm seeing Ryan out there? Was that the, the bio cell or is that still the, uh, temporary?
That's still, that's still the temporary for now.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. But they do have that for, in place. Done some rework around the trees in order to protect those trees in the front. We're about to lay the foundation and for the building itself. And then after that, I expect it to go vertical and things to move, move very quickly. And then they're moving into the grading work on the parking lot for the site now. Anything you want to add, Mike?
Fairway's been very generous and tolerant of me that I visit the site usually once a week, sometimes more than that. Greg takes me out. I've seen it from the forming of the foundation. I've seen the excavation for the bio cells. I've seen, we, we've handled some problems with potential getting into the roots of the trees. Seen the rough end of the, of the electrical and the, and the plumbing. At some point, I would love for all of us to go out and stand in the middle and just see. This is a big center. This is 12,000 square feet almost. And it's going to be incredibly fabulous. But, but yeah, they've, they've been very good. Greg, I, I've been very impressed with Fairway because they are, they are taking this project on like it's, like it's one of their showcase projects and the only staff who we hit, we're a little behind in, because of the weather. But like Hank says, once we get the foundation poured and get it cured, then it'll start happening pretty quickly.
Is there a video that's showing the phases as it goes? As it's being developed?
Great idea.
I think we'd ask Ryan Reedy to, to work on some with Ryan Reedy.
I don't think we ever got an, a, an agreement with Mr. Reedy to do yet, but it's, I guess it's not too late to start that as the progress takes off from now.
I'm sure we'll do it, yeah.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask Joyce, I know they did that with building the town square. Who actually did the video, Joyce? Do you remember?
Really know if anybody did that, uh, video. I, I know a number of people took stills. But, um, that's all that I remember.
Maybe that's thinking, like a slide presentation of this, of stills when it was being constructed.
Yeah, Mike, back when, uh, we were building Tobaccoville, the, the manufacturing facility, the, the general contractor hired an airplane to fly over once a week and take aerial photography. Just as a thought, you might mention to the, to Chief Needham that I bet they can launch from the fire department parking lot and fly over the site as this building progresses and.
And, and the chief is still here watching.
Okay, well, uh, just, just a thought.
Let's get with Ryan and I thought we, I thought we had already, um, started the documentation of this because I think we wanted to get it when it was, before we started breaking ground on it. So we need to move post haste to catch up where we are. Ryan?
I think we are taking photos. Um, in fact, I spoke with Greg on site this week and he said they were going to be pouring a slab on Saturday. And I let Stacy Howard know and she, she directed, uh, Ryan Reedy to go and take some photos possibly on Saturday while they were pouring. But I think he's going in and out, you know, like you say, every week and so go and take a picture so we can from the drone, from a drone, from a aerial standpoint. I think that's happening.
Greg, can we confirm all that?
I'll, I'll check with Ms. Howard tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Mrs. Walker, actually Hank, we got, uh, item you missed, a CCUC Capital Reserve update.
Oh, yes. Sorry for a second. Let me get that up for you. Let's go to Ms. Walker real quick and I'll get that queued up.
Joyce, you're on.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we have a retreat coming on Saturday, February the 6th at 8:00 a.m. All of the access information will be on the agenda that we send out. So you'll be able to, um, get it that way. And also, um, just as a reminder to everyone, we talked about the fact that appointments are going to be up at the end of to have information specific because I was only giving you info off the top of my head last week. So I do have some specific information. Parks and Rec has three openings. And, uh, one person is going to actually be resigning. There are two that have requested to return. Planning Board has two openings. One has requested to return and there will be another person resigning. The Willow Run Municipal Service District has three openings. One for District One, one for District Two, and one for District Four. We do know that Districts One and Four are returning. We still have District Two open. And the Zoning Board of Adjustment has an, um, an opening for a permanent person and that person has requested to return. The other person who was an alternate is going to be resigning. Of course, all of our committees are open ended except utilities. However, we only have three people left on that committee. Other than that, uh, that's basically it. All of this happens annually in March. Student Leadership is on a different, um, schedule because they follow the school system. That's it as far as what we have upcoming. And you'll have more specific information at your briefing in February.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. I've got that there. Our current balance with CCUC for our capital reserve now sits at $4,013,242.23. And that is of, um, the end of September. So we still don't have the closeout for the end of the year.
And that's not included in the six and a half million dollars that we have in the general fund reserve?
That is correct. That is a separate, a separate cap reserve held in trust by CCUC for projects related to the town as, as it pretty much can be sewer.
Great.
Okay. I just wanted to give that report for council.
Thank you. Any questions for Hank or Ms. Walker? Hank, give us a recap of our briefing, please.
Okay. Real quick, I think there was a reminder. Did you do your reminder, Joyce, on the retreat?
I did. I just did, yes.
Got it. All right. For the, um,
Honestly, it's the best way. Don't, just please do it.
Okay. For the approval at the briefing and action meeting on January 7th, we had the 2021 advocacy goals approved for submittal to the North Carolina League of Municipalities. Mayor Horn was appointed to, as the town's delegate to the North Carolina League to cast the town's vote for the advocacy, advocacy bulk goals. Excuse me, that's a tongue twister.
And I did spend about two hours on the, a Zoom meeting with the league day before yesterday and we went over those priorities and I think we chose the correct ones.
Okay. Third, we had, um, two items that the town considered and approved. First was ordinance 2021002, the mending budget ordinance 2022001, an amount of $10,895 for drainage improvements at the intersection of Big Tree Drive and Joka Cherry Lane. And, uh, we had resolution 2021002. I'm sure I mispronounced that. Awarding contract for stormwater drainage repairs to Russell Construction Company for the intersection of that, uh, that same intersection in amounts not to exceed $10,895. Lastly, let's see, we had two ordinances approved. We had ordinance 2021003, amending budget ordinance 202001 in an amount of $4,170 to remove sidewalk trip and fall hazards on, in Brook Forest. And lastly, we approved ordinance 2020050, approving UDO L dash 162 downtown overlay district references in Chapter A, Definitions, Chapter B, Article 2, H, Boundary Information and Adopting Official Map of the Downtown, allowing the required 24 hours following the close of the public hearing under NC Session Law 2020.3. And that is it. You're muted, Mayor.
Mayor.
You're muted, Mayor.
There we go. Mr. Franklin, since you are, our language on Louisville foreign languages, would you like to pronounce the name of that street? I believe it's Choke Cherry.
Choke Cherry, all right.
Very good. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the report that Hank just gave, or man just gave, is actions that we took at our briefing. Sometimes we find it necessary to take actions. We'd like to report those out to you at our regular town council meeting so you're aware of the activities of your council. All righty, we are at the second opportunity for public comment. If you're not comatose at this point, I would love to see anybody who would like to make a comment is our opportunity to listen to you. Hank, do we have anybody?
Well, we still have Darren and David.
Well, Darren or David, if either one of you would like to jump in and make a comment? Please feel free to do it.
Oh, we got somebody. Here he comes. Allow him to talk. There we go. Go ahead, Darren.
Yeah, I sent Ryan a text. I told him we'd be glad to help out with your aerial photo or video, whatever it is that you need. If you don't have someone already taking care of that for you, he can just catch up with us and let us know.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Anyone else, Hank?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. If those are listening at home and would like to submit written comments about this meeting this evening, please submit those to townclerk@lewisvilleNC.net, townclerk@lewisvilleNC.net, and make it part of our record for this evening. Council comments, Ms. Welch, would you like to start on our COVID?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Horn, and please add anything I've forgotten. And I will be happy to say what I found out today. I was listening to Dr. Mandy Cohen of our state, Secretary of State with the Health Department, and she had announced that now people sixty-five and over would be able to get their vaccinations. So I checked with the Health Department, actually got through to them, which was a pleasant surprise. And I was informed that they are not ready at this time because they're still giving shots to seventy-five and over. But if individuals would check at Forsyth.CC, they will keep that up to date is when they will be able to give out the vaccines then for sixty-five and over. Also, wanted to say that if I understood it right with the news that Guilford County was offering the shot for sixty-five and over, and that you could call tomorrow morning starting at 10:00 a.m., and we might put this on our website, Hank, if you would, 336-641-3245, and get an appointment for the shot at the convention center. Other than that, they were also asking for volunteers to help with people as they are signing up, entering line to get the shots to help expedite everyone that is waiting patiently for this. That's everything that I have, Mayor Horn.
You were right on it. My cat agrees with you. The, the, I'm speaking with the volunteer coordinator at the Health Department, and she is getting back to me with specifics on what volunteers need to do, and are there any age requirements or health requirements involved in volunteering? And as soon as we have that, we'll put it up on our Facebook page for anybody that wishes to help out. But thank you, Ms. Welch. That was very comprehensive. Thank you. As we say, not the rider, but the completeness of it.
I think Davidson County also, I've seen where they are, you can get your vaccine, I think, in any North Carolina county.
Yeah.
And saw that Davidson County was making vaccines available. They had a, they had a phone number and a web address where you could go to sign up. The other thing I'm wondering about, though, is whether they're going to move out into the community to provide vaccinations. Was that covered at all?
Hank, that's one of the questions that I ask the Health Department Director. And by the nature of the handling requirements for the vaccine, there's not a lot of places that they can take it out to that have the proper refrigeration or the proper, I guess, yeah, proper refrigeration to keep it from spoiling. They're looking at it now. I believe what Director Swift was saying is that they potentially could pack it with dry ice and bring it out. We offered the Louisville Fire Department as a site if they wanted to come out there and do it. In fact, one of the things I've asked is, and Chief Darren is still on the phone, I'll bring him up to date on this later, but right now, there's still about twenty-five percent of the residents in North Carolina who will not get the, will not get the shot. They don't believe it, and they don't think it's a real deal. So hopefully, the Public Health Department and our Fire Department can cooperate. We'll make the video, and we'll show our firefighters either saying they got the shot or getting the shot, and we'll do some widespread publicity of that because I think we, maybe we can help, at least in our own little corner of the world, getting people more interested in making sure they get the shot.
Currently, I just saw some stats out of the Health Department in an email. They, if I recall right, they've done thirty-five hundred vaccinations since rollout on the 22nd of December. And they have, you know, we've asked them about, Forsyth County is not having a hard time keeping up with the vaccines and putting them in arms. The same, a day and a half, though, they received fifty thousand phone calls for people who were attempting to get appointments. So there is a very high demand for this vaccination right now for Forsyth County.
One individual that made a hundred of those calls.
Yeah, the other thing is the refrigeration needs are more on the side of, I think, on the side of the Pfizer vaccine. That's the one they've been giving most recently. But if they're getting more supply of Moderna, I don't think it is as much of a problem. So if, you know, at some point in the future they have the Moderna vaccine again, it might be possible for them to, you know, to move out into the community. I heard the National Guard was being deployed to help with these vaccines. So that could be something that, you know, the town could help with at the point when they get that that vaccine.
The National Guard is here. They've got two teams of six assisting.
Yeah. And Dr. Sadler, I understand they're going to call out the Army Reserve, too. Anybody over seventy years old in the Army Reserve?
I'm so long retired, they won't be calling me.
Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, so along this topic, there was in our email that just came up. They're having tomorrow, the North Carolina League of Municipalities is having kind of a vaccine thing. So it's like a little webinar, if anybody's interested in that, to hop on.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you. Also, Mayor Horn, I understand that Johnson &amp; Johnson is waiting for approval for their vaccine, which only requires one vaccine instead of two.
Wow, okay.
But I believe only eighty-five percent effective, but that's still plenty high.
For those that know our former mayor, Dan Pugh, both he and his wife Brenda were victims of the COVID-19 virus while they were out in Ohio. And both, both are recovering nicely, but it is, it's touching a lot of folks that we know, and most are recovering. But we still have a lot of folks that we've got to reach to make sure they understand the importance of getting this shot. Get the shot, as Mr. Franklin says, give the blood, take the shot. Very good. Council members, any other comments this evening?
Yes, I have.
Ms. Foster, yes?
Two things. One, the masking up Louisville. I saw that on the website. Did you want to address how it looks great?
Yeah, we've got it up. I think it went, I think Stacy put it up today on our webpage, and I think Jeannie is in the process of putting it up on TV6. And that's, these are the first three of six that we'll put up on our sites.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for reminding us of that.
Yeah, and then I just briefly, the retreat, the next time we gather as a group will be supposedly at the retreat with the COVID and the numbers. I think, I don't, maybe we have discussion offline or we send an email, but I'm just wondering about the gathering. I certainly have my hesitations about coming together, as much as I want to do that, and as much as that's important to do, to have some good dialogue.
Hank, you want to lay out the plans?
I had, I'd assumed we were doing this virtually, but we can entertain any thing that council wants to end up doing. I've already set up the Zoom credentials.
Okay, thank you. That was, I wasn't aware of that, so.
Okay.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. And, all right, that's all I mainly needed to know. Thank you.
And Ms., Madam Town Clerk, I sent you something in the chat. I don't know if you've seen it.
You didn't see me shake my head.
I didn't know. I was looking elsewhere, probably. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Very good. Anything else, counsel?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend Pam, the first tax document that I've received from anybody was from the town of Louisville. So she's Johnny on the spot again, if you will. And Mike, to talking about all the COVID and everything, my motto for the year is I want to be jabbed by June.
That's exactly right. Anybody else, counsel?
I would, I've already received my vaccination, and just for folks, for whatever it's worth, I had zero symptoms, just some minor tenderness in my arm. And that's been the experience of everybody I've talked to. My wife's had it. My wife's a physician, everybody probably knows that. She had the Pfizer, I had the Moderna. Neither one of us had any symptoms or significant symptoms other than some mild tenderness, which could have been managed probably with Tylenol or something like that. I don't usually take any medicine for things like that. But anyway, that's just FYI for people who may have some reluctance out of fear of having some adverse event associated with the vaccination. Neither one of us have had anything, nor do we know of anybody that's had anything of any significance who's had the vaccination.
Thank you for that. Council members, anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? Ms. Welch?
I.
Ms. Hunt?
I.
Ms. Foster?
I.
Dr. Sadler? Mr. Franklin? Mayor Zai, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for being with us tonight. We did have a little more lengthy meeting, but I think the information that was presented tonight will be beneficial, and certainly the recognition of our two groups in Louisville is something we wanted to spend some time on tonight. With that, everybody be safe and hug your kids. We adjourn.